Good to see you. I was able to tune in by Zoom last time.
Yeah, I've zoomed every time, so it's.
Well, see, I don't have internet where I was. I had to use mobile hotspot. I wasn't gonna sign on for two hours.
That's funny. Yeah, some of those law courts, that'd be.
So last month, last month, I actually zoomed in because I knew it was gonna be high up by. I got a stack. I put them in my shred box after. There's a few of them that I keep, but most of them I put in the shred box.
I just kept them. You or somebody else when I first started.
Brad keeps all his.
And somebody, yeah, I think it was Brad, when I first started.
It's it's handy like that. I keep all the minutes, but. Okay, this is my 12th year, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Wow. I'll keep all of them, but I do keep track mentally if any of them come up, I get back. And you can do the archive nowadays.
Well, both, yeah.
Better enabled, so you can say the names.
How are you? Back in person. Good to see you, working hard.
You didn't quite get time to put together though.
Oh, yeah.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Three dimensionally, right?
I figured this is only where people recognize me.
Oh, yeah.
I've seen. Meeting announcement. Just to make sure.
Oh, wow.
And I've seen on the internet where you can send out couple photos and. Should I drive a school bus? Keep wearing.
Yeah, yeah, yes. I saw an email come through today about the lamp that. Yeah, mutation that seems to be, yeah, it's in South America.
West picture. Share enough expectations. And then just kind of.
Oh, yeah.
My wife finally took her dog roughly a month after she was back. So I always thought. There was a time we were even working best in the house because my wife and I were working. I thought my wife said, I would hate for us to be in leases.
Yeah. Like I would want to buy the house. I'm doing fun. Showing houses.
You've been all over again.
Yeah, she must. Hey, guys, are we? No walk until Bishop, so that's 10. Okay, so we need six. Well, I just know that there are some people who know what's gonna be. We all have our modus operandi. There's always a few that come in. We have a horse farm. We told the clients that board the horses when this set up a protocol. During the thick of the winter, everybody was like, we were the place where all these people came. When they got on the farm, we had to say, you're in fresh air, but spread out a little bit. Down Cold Ferry, Sam Cooper and Saxon Road, that's my.
Okay.
I did too. Nowadays, Cold Ferry gets, when they put out the rubber strips, they get a 96 mile an hour every ton. They only post public from a website anymore because you're always so embarrassingly high. Yeah, so it's. That's my property that they.
Oh, they're leasing, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Give a lot to.
Yeah, well, my horses are acupuncturists, they have chiropractors, they have podiatrists, they have. Yeah. We were building it for a personal use, but I was part owner with the other properties, the university.
Right.
My wife says. We often buy it from our partners. Using as a counter offer, we couldn't put it together. Because I needed owner financing, I needed sweetheart deal or whatever, but we took. It's closer, the horses ended up coming to us, but of course, our property is a lot smaller. And we, my daughter got diagnosed with muscular dystrophy, a form of muscular dystrophy, so as a family, we weren't gonna use it as much as I planned.
Right.
But prior to her diagnosis, she was eighteen nations, so we were.
Oh, that's awesome.
We were pretty seriously competing. I had two root pairs and I was, I bred a national champion.
Does Doug Gladney still, did he show Doug Gladney, you know, CPA? His daughter shows.
We were up against Bruce Springsteen's daughter, Tom Solly's daughter. We flew a horse out to California to Stephen Spielberg to look at. Who's grand daughter. They actually sent it back. It's too well. Too well trained. She needs a little more spirit.
Yeah, we spent two years up in Lexington. The law system.
Oh, yeah, that's a place.
Rolex.
Yeah. We, we showed up there, total fifteen weeks, you know, five, five week blocks each year.
Yeah.
In a tour of Red Bull. Trained with the Kentucky, the Lexington Fire Department for vehicle rollover accidents.
Right.
So sure, the department comes and gets me whenever there's new forces out. You sure this isn't one of your? He hasn't been quite so badly. We are bare minimum. So now we. Guys.
Guess.
Where are we? See, I can get it still.
A lot of vision. Kind of starting things. A lot of dollars. Six, I had to go back.
What is your like, did you move in your boss?
Yeah.
I thought it happened.
Yeah.
One year, I took a time off for homeschooling my daughter, which. Must be this or something. We could still go to the shows. So.
Me in here is kind of.
I tried to.
I'm sure with three kids, he definitely needs it. Yeah.
Ten minutes each way.
Yeah, that was a pretty wild Sunday. My son's going to send it back. Got there late last night. So the ultra.
Even then, if I. So enough of a nasty interview. But I would have been. Parts, great. That's great. There is the one.
College.
Yeah. Oh, here I was on the. We had a dedicated lab. Okay, cool. I taught at Clark Middle School. Could you let me end this? So I'd just like to see what people are saying. Can they send in the chat? You must be present to participate.
Yeah.
As it is seven o'clock, I'll call the, this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the fully live and in-person July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the O'Conne County Planning Commission. We are a recommending body to the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners or appropriate city council for final action. Tonight's agenda and sign-in sheets for people wishing to speak are available outside the commission chambers. This is the procedure we follow. The O'Conne County Planning Department staff presents their report and recommendations on each request. Public input is received from a, from the petitioner or petitioner's representative. Public input is received from a group representative or any individuals speaking in favor of the request. This period will be limited to twenty minutes total. Public input is received from a group representative or any individuals speaking in opposition to the request. This period will also be limited to twenty minutes total. The petitioner or petitioner's representative is allowed an opportunity for response or clarification if time remains in the twenty-minute period. The public input session will then be closed. The planning commission will discuss the request and may ask questions of planning department staff and/or the petitioner. Upon a motion and a second, and after any discussion of the motion, the planning commission will vote on the motion. The commission may elect to approve, modify, place conditions on, table, or deny a motion. We ask that you observe the following items regarding public input. Upon approaching the podium, please state your name and home address. Please direct your comments to the planning commission and not to the audience. When there are multiple speakers, please avoid repeating statements made by previous speakers so that there is time to hear from everyone. We ask the audience to extend the courtesy of not applauding or commenting on any of the speakers, speakers, excuse. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. Commissioners, you have in front of you the minutes for the June twenty-first meeting. Please review and indicate any corrections, modifications, changes, et cetera. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve from Scott Green, do have a second, second from Penny Mills. We can actually just kind of raise our hands now instead of going around the roll. How nice. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. First order of new business on the agenda is special use P twenty-one dash zero one zero one Ernest Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, you have case number P twenty-one zero one zero. This is the location map that's located in the northern part of the county. And the parcel number is C zero two F zero two one on Greenbrier Court. It is currently zoned R one in the regional center character area. And the applicant is requesting for a special use approval for a barber shop home business. No changes will be made to the property at ten twenty-one Greenbrier Court. And the staff recommends approval with the one condition. Okay.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative, please.
Hi, my name is May Rivera, and I go mainly by Sissy. And I live at ten twenty-one Greenbrier Court. And I'm requesting to put a small barber shop in my home. Um, I have owned the barber shop for nineteen years. I've been at this location for ten years. My lease will be up at the end of August. I am doing appointments only. I will do it from nine to five thirty-three days a week. And I will have one car other than mine at a time in my driveway. I live at the end of the cul-de-sac. I have no bus turnaround. The buses do not come down there. Um, it is very well lit. It will meet all requirements for state board. And it, I will have no extra noise to my subdivision or my neighbors. I have letters from my neighbors tonight that they are fine with me doing this. And we are. One of the original homeowners since our subdivision was built. So we've been there since nineteen ninety-nine. I, um. I would like to respectfully ask the planning commissioners to please, at this time, allow me this opportunity to place my small business in my residence. Due to the fact that during COVID, we did go through some pretty tough financial changes. Um, we were able to. Hang in there with some of them and, um. But at this time, I just think this is a better choice for the business at this time. So with all due respect, that's what I'm asking right now from my community and the planning commissioners.
Thank you.
All done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? Would anyone?
That's okay. My name is Teresa Bird. I'm next door to Sissy and Ernest. We are also one of the first owners in the, in the neighborhood, and I certainly have no problem with her doing this. No reservations whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the request? That's okay.
My name is Stephanie Bales, and I live at ten fifty-one Timber Ridge Court, which is directly across from the cul-de-sac. I'm also one of the original people in the neighborhood. Um, totally support her. I'm thankful that her business survived during COVID and that she is looking for an opportunity to continue to invest in this community. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the request? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Hearing no one else seeking to speak, we'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do any of you have any questions or comments on this reason? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Stephen Strickland, I'll make the motion to approve special use case P twenty-one dash zero one zero one with one condition recommended by staff.
Motion from Stephen Strickland. Second from Chuck Hunt, any discussion? All those in favor of the motions, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is unsurprisingly P twenty-one dash zero one zero two Marielle Bishop and Sue P. Roach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty-one zero one zero two applicant Marielle Bishop and Sue P. Roach. Owners, the property owner is the state Mary Lee Bishop and Sue P. Roach co-trustees for Pat CP Clark. Has located at twenty eleven Elder Mill Road as the Kate Pritchett life estate. Again, you'll notice the location is south end of the county. Just off of Elder Road, Elder Mill Road, excuse me, this is the aerial showing the property and the parcel in question. And it's currently zoned AG. And in the agricultural preservation. Character area, and the reason is to request a portion of the property to be rezoned from AG to AR to allow for the creation of additional two-acre residential lot with an existing house in, in an effort to settle the estate. Again, this is the concept plan that was shown, showing the small two-acre tract with the existing home place that would be. Cut out. Again, enlargement of that tract. And staff recommends approval with the one condition.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative, please. Oh, that's okay. We, we've established a precedent here. If you raise your hand, you can speak.
I'm Marielle Bishop, and I am co-executor of my mother's life estate, Kate Pritchett. And my dad bought this farm right after World War Two, and it's been in the family all these many years, and he's passed away. And our mother has passed away, and we're attempting to divide the property. Everything will stay in conservation use, so it's a rural area. And our sister, whom we have with us tonight, will receive the house with the two-acre lot is what we would like to do. So we would like a consideration on this. Thank you.
Owen, for the minutes, would you tell us your address, please?
My address, seventeen forty-one Experiment Station Road, Watkinsville, Georgia. That's not the, I don't live on the property. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
My sister here does, my other sister, Sue Roach, all the other residents there are family on this piece of property. There's no other, you know, people that are, would be involved in this. Everything would be left to either our children or one of us, so. And as I said, the rest of it will go back. It was all in conservation use, and it will all go back in now, the remaining portions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, return to the commission. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions or comments about this request? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Make motion to approve case number P twenty-one dash zero one dash zero two with the staff.
Motion to approve by Scott Green, second.
Stephen Strickland, I'll second.
Second from Stephen, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your. Unanimous. Next item on the agenda is.
Do you want to give people a chance that are finished with their business to leave or?
Certainly.
We were doing that during COVID.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chuck. Although I can't imagine why anybody would not want to stay.
It's just getting good, Chuck.
All right. Your, your next case, P twenty-one zero one zero eight. This is applicant Jennifer DeCraw, Colley and Lori D. Wagner owner as well. This is located in the northeast corner of Jimmy Daniel Road and Ben Drive. See, in the exhibit. Now I can. Location just south of three sixteen and Ben Drive. It's actually along Jimmy Daniel with a portion that. is adjacent to Ben Drive. The current zoning is AG and it is in the regional center character area. Again, the request is to go from AG to OBP for an office business park for general office and office warehouse space. You have the concept plan in front of you and your packets. This is also an exhibit that for discussion and the enlargement of that as well. Represent photographs that were submitted, architectural images. And then staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. One, two, and three are our standard conditions. Four, five, and six, I'll go with those briefly. All building facade materials should be brick, stone, or glass as shown in the first and third representative architectural images submitted in the narrative of the application. No metal siding shall be permitted on any building in the development. Number five, at the time of the development of each lot, sidewalks shall be extended from the proposed public road to connect with sidewalks around each building. And number six, all lots within development shall only have vehicle access to the proposed interior street and a one foot no access easement along Jimmy Daniel shall be shown on the preliminary final flats for the project.
Thank you, guys. This time we'll hear from the petitioner or petitioner's represent.
Good evening. My name's Frank Pittman, Pittman Engineering. I live at fourteen hundred Saxon Road in Watkinsville. I'm here tonight representing the developer, Mr. Kevin Price, who is, who is here as well. He's a local county resident and local county businessman. As Mr. Herring kind of explained, this, the proposal for this project is, is to rezone, the request is to rezone a piece of property on Jimmy Daniel Road at Ben Drive from the existing ag zoning to OBP to allow for an office park, office warehouse park. The plan would be for, to allow for up to nine lots with individual buildings ranging from roughly eight to 10,000 square feet per building. The plan is for these buildings to be one-story buildings, buildings. The, as you see on the architecture, they, they're planned to be brick, stone, glass. Right, do you have that? Can you pull up that photograph I sent this afternoon? The, there is public water in there, so it would be tied onto county water, but the yeah, thank you. The, the buildings will be on septic systems since there's not sewer there. The, the property is surrounded by existing B-two OBP and B-one properties. There is an undeveloped R-one piece right across Ben Drive that is still owned by the Ben Drive developer, so that the plans for that would eventually be office park as well. This sits on Jimmy Daniel Road, just off three sixteen. As, as all of you know, the, the DOT is going to be doing the full interchange there at Jimmy Daniel, so this would be an office park with quick access to three sixteen. The timeline for this project, you know, assuming that, that we get zoned would be to probably start construction first next year. I think the, the area is, is growing. Office spaces is running out and, you know, new complex like this would be, would be good for the area. With that, I will leave it up to you guys for any questions. My, my only other comment would be that it is in the regional center carried area, which, you know, is, is really set up for this type of development. But I'm here for questions and otherwise we would ask for your guys' recommendation of approvals.
Thank you. Kevin Price has signed up to speak. Kevin, would you like to come up and speak to the request?
Thank you. I'm Kevin Price. I reside at twelve sixty West Fitzgerald Lane in Oak County County. I really don't have a whole lot more to add than what Frank mentioned. This rendering that, that is up here, our current office building is at twenty-five hundred Daniels Bridge Road. The two-story building, so we propose to do a similar architectural feature there and sort of what we plan to do is, could you bring back up the site plan, proposed site plan that shows the lots, please? And this may be too much information, but to me, it's, it's important. Okay, so the three lots that are shown that are on Jimmy Daniel there, we would consider those buildings to be very similar across through there with some really nice landscape and just sort of the, the door map to that development. So we support and embrace the idea of four-side masonry and just high-quality construction. And we've even got some strong preliminary interest in people that want to, want to locate here. So we'd be happy to answer any other questions, but at this point, I would give my time.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of this request? Would anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this request? If not, we'll close the public session and return to the commission. Commissioners, do any of you have any questions or comments on this request?
I do have a question regarding condition number four from the planning department indicated that there would be no metal siding on any of the buildings. But I noticed in your proposal that the interior office building warehouse should have some metal siding. Right. Is that an issue?
That's not an issue. I think in a, in an ideal world, as Mr. Price mentioned, the, you know, the front three buildings along Jimmy Daniel would have been kind of the higher-end buildings and, and the, the proposal would have been for the back buildings that back up to those Ben Drive buildings to maybe have some metal for some cost savings. It's not a deal killer. If, if we had to follow this condition, you know, we, we can live with that.
While we're talking about conditions, number six seems to imply that we're going to lose the driveway with that.
Guy, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, the UDC requires that all lots of a major subdivision access via an internal street. So, but I do believe the, I do believe, yeah, as we are about.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? In case I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve reason case number P twenty-one zero one zero eight.
Motion to approve from Penny Mills. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Nathan got his hand up just a little bit, a little bit quicker there. So we'll go with Nathan Bird for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right. Again, unanimous. Next item on the agenda is special use P twenty-one dash zero one zero nine, SRC Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the applicant is Logan Waters. The property owner is SRC Development LLC. This is located at twelve twenty-five Stone Road. Special use P twenty-one zero one nine, just off of Union Church Road. And this is the amenity lot, part of Stonewood Subdivision. And this is currently zoned R-one. It is a suburban neighborhood character. And again, it's the special use required to come for you guys and the board commissioners for approval prior to construction. And this is the concept plan that was submitted with the application and you have that in your packets. And then there were architectural renderings of, of the proposed development as well. And staff recommends approval with the one condition.
Thank you, guys. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
Noon, Logan Waters, fourteen twenty-six Wyndham Way, Bethlehem, Georgia. So as mentioned, a condition of rezone for the subdivision, we are required to get a conditional use permit for the amenity area. As shown on the sketch, we are planning on providing a tennis court, a pickleball court, a pool with cabana, and the cabana will house the mail kiosks as well. Parking is provided and we also allow for pedestrian access for the general use from the subdivision residence. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We have Mark and Beth Sanders signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I am Mark Sanders. We reside at sixteen sixty Union Church Road. We've been there, my wife Beth and I have been there for the last two and a half years. Previously, we were twenty-one-year residents of Jennings Mill Subdivision. So we have a great appreciation for the ag zoning and R-one and how important it is to raise families in residential areas. And we're here tonight just for a, a brief word of appreciation to you for what you do and from the planning staff and also for the developers, for Mr. Waters and Deuce, Deuce South for a very thoughtful plan and development next door neighbors. We're some of the NIMBYs. Y'all deal with NIMBYs all the time. We don't want anybody behind us or next to us, but if we've got to have somebody, I've been very impressed with the caliber instruction of construction, the quality of the workforce, and the very thoughtful design, which goes to this amenity area. I want to thank the developers for actually adjusting the building setback from the, the interior road that is in Stone Creek Subdivision. They've adjusted it ahead thirty feet. So there's a twenty-foot landscape buffer, which allows the full development to actually be pushed closer to the interior siding there. Also, very thoughtful reflection reflected in the, in the notes by the developer and by the planning staff where lighting plan, again, two of our best resources is Oak County counties is, is a dark sky and a green space. As the residents next door, we share that southern boundary. All we ask is that we protect the integrity. Our major concern, obviously, is the screening, the visual screening, noise screening, light pollution. As it abuts that, we're excited that there's that sixty-foot conservation corridor. If you notice from the plat, it actually says disturbed areas to be determined TBD. All we would ask from the commission and the, the county commission and the developers, an agreement that we could do some surgical land clearing as opposed to clear cutting, that would really protect the integrity of that conservation corridor. We love the architectural renderings. One of the concerns you have is everything between the, the pool and the back of the landscape and architectural rendering is green grass. And right now that is burdened. We got some mature hardwoods back there and whatnot. And we would just ask some care in terms of not denuding that, that lot. But again, we're, we're here in support, conditional support. We know what this means for the neighborhood and for the tax base of Oak County County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Beth Sanders, you are also signed up to speak. Would you care to do so? You've trained him with. Well, they say even a blind squirrel finds a nut from time to time. So would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments about this request?
All right. I have one question about the timing. Logan, are you doing this before you start phase two or what do we expect?
So phase two is actually in the works now. It will be probably under construction before this happens. Phase three, we're also looking to start submitting that for permitting as well. As far as the timeline for when they begin construction, I'm not sure, but I can definitely find out.
We, we've had it happen that all the houses get built. The entities is sort of an afterthought. So that's why I'm asking if there's any particular timeline.
No, I haven't been told anything specifically. They are planning on building out phase three as well as phase four. So that would obviously be, you know, several years down the road.
But you say phase two is sort of underway. So if I was to propose a condition that said the amenities need to be in place before phase three starts, would you have an objection for that?
No, I would not have objection to that.
I have one other question for you. Could you address the landscaping issue that the homeowner just brought up? And keeping some of those hardwood trees?
Sure. So we actually don't have any disturbance planned in the conservation area. The architectural rendering, instead of showing trees in background, they just showed landscape grass or sod, but it actually will be conserved. I've already done some preliminary grading and as far as the septic goes, anywhere inside that conservation corridor, we won't have any disturbed area. So it all remains natural state.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this rezon request? In case I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve P twenty-one dash zero one zero nine with the addition of one condition. If approved, it amenities should be built before phase three building begins.
All right, we have a motion to approve with one additional condition from Chuck Hunt. Do we have a second?
Could you talk a little bit about why, what your concern is?
We've had a couple of other subdivisions that the homeowners have to come begging for the amenities because it gets forgotten when the sales don't go as planned or the subdivision doesn't finish out in the timeframe that the developer expects. It's not been SRC's issue, but it has been an issue in the county on a couple of occasions.
For the public hearing, it's been closed. Do we have a second for Chuck's motion? Motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have another motion?
I note that we approved special use case twenty-one oh one oh nine with the conditions that staff has placed.
Motion to approve with conditions from Karen Hilliard. Do we have a second? Second from Nathan. Any discussion? All those in favor of the, the motion, please signify by raising your right. All right. And any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is rezone P twenty-one dash zero one ten, Mike Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty-one zero one one zero. Mike Thornton is the applicant. Mike and Donna Thornton are the owners. This is located at ten sixty Hog Mountain Road. That's approximately point five nine acres, currently zoned AG. It's located just off of Hog Mountain Road and adjacent to, or close to four forty-one intersection. This is the parcel, the area of that parcel. It's currently zoned AR and it's in the civic center character area. And again, the request is to go from AR, Agricultural Residential District to B-two Highway Businesses District for a drive-through restaurant. And this rezon is accompanied by a special exception variance, P twenty-one zero one 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 that we heard by the board commissioners to reduce the required fifty-foot incompatible use buffer. You have the concept plan in your application packets. This is a blow up of that showing the fifteen hundred square foot building with the drive-through and the access the, off of the old Hog Mountain Road. These are the architectural images that were submitted with the application, Chatters and Presetron Village. So the architecture is proposed to be in keeping with those types of design. And staff recommends approval with the following conditions of one through three are our standard conditions. And the number four, at the owner's expense, the owner shall design and construct improvements of the project entrance. Old Hog Mountain Road and Hog Mountain Road as shown on the attached transportation recommendation sheet. Said improvement shall be shown on the preliminary site plan and site development plans for the project. You should have those in your packet. And that would be this exhibit showing the proposed improvements. And it's mostly, it's primarily striping. As this entrance, the proposed entrance comes in, it is offset. You can hardly see it, but I can get the light. See if I'll show you better. There is a, a small outline here. That is the existing condition of that interest. So it's offset from the proposed interest. So we are asking the applicant to So we are asking the applicant to pull this nose back and pull this one up so that we align this intersection with the entrance. And then that'll create a stop condition here, stop condition here, as well as a right out only. And then it'll be restriping out on Hog Mountain. There's currently a gourd area right here, a striped area that will be, need to be changed to a left turn into the facility at that location. So provide stacking of a left at that. And these are recommendations from our third-party transportation planning firm. That's our presentation. I would like to answer questions when time's appropriate.
Thank you, Guy. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioners represent.
Good evening. My name is Mark Campbell. I'm at twenty-five fifty-one Oliver Bridge Road, Watkinsville. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mike Thornton and Donna Thornton. They've owned this property, Mike indicated to me, since nineteen eighty-eight. And as you can see, it is a relatively small piece of property. So it's less than six tenths of an acre. It is currently zoned AR. I will respectfully disagree with planning commission's assessment that it is viable in its current zoning for either agricultural or residential, being that small of a lot. But I do appreciate the comment. We have worked with the staff going through the options on this. For those of you who may not know Mike and Donna, a lot of the experience with restaurant development, specifically restaurant development with a drive-through function as well. So given the constraints of this site, it's not really possible to have a very large building. It's not possible to have a lot of extra items, but what we have, we think is the highest best use for this site as well. So I'll just step through a couple of brief things and again, be happy to answer any questions. See if I can make this work. So just to give an idea here, and I do appreciate the next slide will show the latest aerials by Oconee County GIS that really give a function. But five years ago, two thousand sixteen aerial overview, you can see that small parcel that's two hundred fifty to three hundred feet away from Macon Highway four forty-one. And things that have changed just in the past five years, obviously Presbyterian Village, the car wash known as the fire station car wash there that would be on the corner and some of the things that are around that area. The property directly to the west of this is also owned by Westminster Presbyterian. So Presbyterian Homes owns that property as well. As part of that, you can see a little bit from this aerial, they actually installed a sewer line along what would be the western boundary of this property. So again, there's not really room for septic service on this, but thankfully there is public water and public sewer that is available at that location. So to give an idea, it's a vegetated site now, not necessarily a lot of desirable vegetation that would be at that location. And that is the access roadway. Again, the frontage is along what is known as Old Hog Mountain Road and not necessarily Hog Mountain Road. And this is just an idea, again, of that site plan. There's been a lot of interesting developments within restaurant in the last eighteen months, and flexibility is one of the keys to that. So what you can see there again, fifteen hundred square feet is a relatively small restaurant, but it also has some outdoor seating area in addition to the drive-through that allows for the flexibility. So there is parking there for that restaurant if someone were to want to sit in the outdoor seating area. But there's also the drive-through, and we've probably all experienced at some level, if you get into a drive-through and then you're isolated in that drive-through and you're stuck, and maybe you don't want to be stuck. Well, there is a bypass lane associated with this layout as well to allow for that one-way traffic, but also hopefully no one will have that feeling of being stuck in the drive-through. Again, happy to answer any questions. Have worked with staff, appreciate the help of staff to go through on this project and with those conditions, certainly understand what those would be if you look at this proposed site plan that's in front of you as well. It shows the incorporation of those comments into that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this proposal?
I just have a question.
Sir, would you like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposal? Okay, well, please come up and state your name, tell us where you live and ask your question.
I'm Steve Harbin. He's at eighteen forty-one Robin Hood Road, Watkinsville. And I just have a question about the the access road. They mentioned a stop bar. What exactly is a stop bar? I'm not really clear on that.
That's a good question. We will get that answered for you. We'll have to do that at the time when the commissioners ask the questions of planning staff, but we will ask specifically what. I'm going to take a guess that it is a painted indicator on the roadway that probably has the words stop in front of it painted as well.
Oh, okay.
Was that, would that be a reasonable? Okay. That's, that appears I know at least one thing about traffic engineering, and that's probably it, but.
Yeah, that was my only concern is what effect it had on the the access roadway. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the request? Would anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to the request? Hearing no one, I'll close the public session and return this to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on this request?
I guess we'll get the official word. Guy was Brad Correct. I saw you shit in your head, but for the audience, it may be nothing.
Yes, that is correct. It is the painted wide stripe in front of a stop sign that indicates this is where you're supposed to stop.
I have several questions, some for you and also some for the applicant. I'm wondering, so this is directly across from the entrance and exit for racetrack that, right?
That's correct.
But there's no intention to put any kind of traffic light there?
No. No, the the limited number of traffic that this would generate would not qualify for its traffic signal. Especially even in the proximity of the existing signal that they'd be too close together.
It seems like this is, like, it's a really problematic intersection already there. And so I'm wondering how traffic coming from the other side would relate to the traffic that's exiting from racetrack now.
Right, okay. So if you go back to this design, you'll have this left that can make this movement, right? You'll have this left making, that can make this one. And then, of course, you can exit both directions with the current racetrack access point, right?
But those people that are coming from, I don't know which direction that is, but from the, from the four forty-one.
The, this direction.
Yeah, from there. They're going to have just emptied off of four forty-one, and they're going to be queued up to turn in at racetrack there. And also, traffic may be queued up to turn in to the restaurant at the same time.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, you'll, this is the through, through lane coming out of four forty-one.
I'm just, I'm also, I want to know from the applicant what, what restaurant is being proposed for that area because that area is a real bottleneck in the morning at rush hour when people want to work into school already. And so I'm not really sure that it could handle any additional traffic in there.
Sure. And I'll be glad to let him answer that. You'll notice the the travel lane is this one, and then you'll have some stacking here for the left into racetrack. And I will mention, you know, we went through a reason not long ago for the mercantile. And there will be improvements that will be required at this intersection for that as well. Because their, their traffic study did indicate that additional through lane at this location, even on this side, would be required. And that's GDOT's jurisdiction, right, four forty-one. So they're involved with that discussion as they move forward with these designs. So there will be improvement with this intersection as the, this develops. And then we believe that these improvements that we're proposing as a condition will help people navigate this intersection or this access point more safely.
Can you go back to that site plan with the the road changes? Because it looks like you've got a through lane there, and then you're going to have a turn lane to turn right coming. Is that, is that true?
Wait, what? I'm not sure where you're, this is.
Like, if you're coming from four forty-one this way, this looks like a through lane.
That's old four forty-one.
Okay.
That gets you to the, to the car wash.
Car wash. Yeah, that's, that's this.
Okay. So that's already been used for car wash.
It is, that's correct.
Karen, do you have any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant, if you could. It's about the restaurant.
Okay. So I do, from the owner, he has had more than one party interested in this. And so that, I can't solidify that as far as what it is. It's limited based on the size of what it is. And he was more than happy to respond to staff's request that it will not be open during the AM hours. So there will be no AM peak for this. It would only be opening later in the day, if that is helpful. I might could, you know, give some possibilities, but again, no tenant has been signed up on this because he's had interest in more than one tenant.
So, but you said that it has a maximum capacity of fifteen hundred square feet.
So the current square footage is fifteen hundred square feet, and the approximate number of seats would be twenty, depending on some configurations, and I'm not an architect. So there would be, you know, some outdoor seating potential for maybe a limited amount of indoor seating, but the majority of that building would be kitchen area to serve. And again.
And we would have that stone to side.
That's correct.
Trying to think about what that brings to my, like, cookout, maybe as being one of the.
Right. So just to give you an idea, kind of from a relative standpoint, so the, the old Dairy Queen that's next to the Zaxby's now is more than one and a half times larger than this. This is actually smaller than a Waffle House. So it's not, it's not very big. It's not a Chick-fil-A. Is that helpful? Okay. Thank you.
It may or may not have a slogan you gotta eat.
Karen, do you have any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I just have a comment. I hate to do it to a property owner, but I certainly would love to see what was going to happen with those other two parcels before I let this one be spot zoned. It's gonna really set the stage for what can happen there, and it may set the stage in a direction that hadn't been considered. So that's just a comment.
I have a question slash comment for, for staff. And I realize that, Guy, this isn't really your purview, but a part of this discussion has to do with the, the amount of traffic that the site generates and especially in light of its proximity to the intersection. And I guess, as, as the petitioner brought up, there have been a lot of changes in the last eighteen months in, in the way that, that we consume goods and services and food. And traditionally, I believe the traffic counts are approximated based on the square footage of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But, you know, one of the things that we've seen, and I, this is anecdotal, but my understanding is, is that companies like Chick-fil-A, for modern business reasons and staffing constraint reasons, are moving more and more to full drive-through restaurants. And so, you know, it makes me wonder, if we eliminate the dining room from footprint, does that yield accurate traffic numbers? And is it reasonable to assume that four hundred trips a day in a business that is primarily or almost exclusively drive-through is an accurate number? And if this number were twice that, how would we feel about this request?
And, and I think, you know, we've had the discussion, but, you know, the Institute of Traffic Engineers is the ones that determine these trip generation counts, you know, for these various uses. And those are the manuals that we use. It'll be interesting to see if those manuals change. They come out with new ones every year, so that each addition, it changes annually. So it'll be interesting to see if they take that into account after seeing how, you know, that we reacted and businesses had to react, you know, through this, through the pandemic.
Hypothetically, if traffic count was times two what we see here, would it have a significant impact on the, what planning staff and your consultant feel like would be the, the needs for this intersection?
Yeah, that, we'd have to look at that. I can't say. We didn't ask our traffic engineer to, to look at times two.
Right. Okay.
Right now, just to, just to clarify, it's the B two that's to the south is where racetrack is, right?
Right. That's correct.
All right. And so, and all the, the green area that surrounds this is all.
AR, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I share Chuck's concern that this is, you know, that by flipping one, we set the stage to flip everything else there. And I think when people in the county tell us they don't want to turn into a net county, this is exactly what they're talking about. And I'm not saying that, that, you know, there shouldn't be something built on that spot, and that AR is going to stick around, but I'm not sure that, that a drive-through restaurant.
They all came to us together because this doesn't even work without the fifty-foot variance. Because with AR on all sides, there should be a fifty-foot buffer for this project, and it doesn't have the footprint that, so without the variance, this doesn't work. And with, with the variance, it makes everybody else have to do what they're doing. Because otherwise, it wouldn't have the buffer that would allow the other uses.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about this request?
Well, I'll try to fly a vote to deny P twenty-one dash oh one one zero.
All right, we have a motion to deny by Chuck Hunt. Do we have a second?
Steve is stripping off second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? In that case, all those in favor of the motion to deny, and to be clear, that means by saying you favor the motion, you are favoring denial of the request. Please indicate by raising your right hand. Vote is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is rezone P twenty-one dash zero one twelve, Jeffrey B. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Again, this is P twenty-one zero one one two. Jeff Bell, owner, Pittman Engineering is the applicant. This is along the west side of Collin Ferry Road. It's possibly nineteen acres just south of the city of Watkinsville. This is the aerial showing the proposed lots. And it's currently zoned AG in the country estates character area. And again, the request is a rezon, a thirteen-acre portion of the property from AG to AR to allow for development of residential subdivision. This rezon is accompanied by hardship variance P twenty-one zero one one three that'll go to the board of commissioners to allow the proposed lots access from Collin Ferry Road rather than from an interior subdivision street. Again, this is the concept plan that you have in your packets showing the five blocks along Collin Ferry and the architectural images that are proposed with the subdivision. Again, staff recommends approval with the three conditions. And then number four, unless the hardship variance is approved by the board commissioner, a lot shall be accessed only from the interior subdivision street. And a one-foot no access easement along Collin Ferry Road shall be shown on the preliminary plat and final plat for the project.
Thank you. We'll hear from the petitioner.
Thank you. Frank Pittman with Pittman Engineering. Again, I'm at fourteen hundred Saxon Road in Watkinsville. I'm here tonight representing Jeff and Tanya Bell, who are, who are also here, the property owners. Most of you may probably know the Bells. They've been, Jeff and his family have been here for generations, have owned this, this land for a long, long time. They just had their second granddaughter. So Ms. Tanya has tasked Jeff with figuring out how to slow down and quit so much work. As part of that, that means kind of shrinking this farming down a little bit. So the, the request here tonight is to rezon a, a small portion of the property on Collin Ferry, this along Bell Lake from its existing ag. from its existing ag zoning to AR. The character area is country estates, which basically calls out one to two acre lots. We're proposing two to three acre lots. So well within keeping with the character area, there are multiple AR lots in the area. There's AR subdivisions along Green Ferry Road, which is, which is right across the road. So it fits the surrounding areas. The, the lots would be on public water. There's water along Collin Ferry. Now, we would have to extend it along the frontage of these lots. They would be on septic. And, you know, with, with five lots, we're talking about very minimal traffic. Not a lot of new kids in school. There'll be a few, but not very much. We're here really to ask for your approval and here to answer any questions you have. And again, the property owners here as well, if you want to ask them some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jeff and Tanya Bell signed up to speak. Would you like to come up and speak to the request? All right, thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this request? Would anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments about this request?
I have a question. Reference the lake liability. So Jeff, are you going to make these homeowners share the responsibility of the dam? So we have that situation on Simon to Bridge Road where the homeowners weren't able to come up with the monies and they're asking. So that is always an issue. I guess so. Since they'll be buying in, they'll know what they're getting into. Question for Guy. AR versus R one. These lots are more the R one size. They aren't underwater, that is. I know I own the lake frontage I've had for thirty years, and I know paying taxes on that portion that's buried underwater. But I have on land, the usable portion is more akin to an R one. For the septic reason, they have to be fifty feet back from the lake. They have a lot size that really is only sixty-five thousand square feet or so, even on the bigger lots. Why did we go or AR versus R one?
Well, the request was for AR, and that is the total platted acreage, whether above ground or.
So you guys don't ascertain the.
We, we don't. But the engineer will have to, when they go through permitting of the individual lots, and they'll have to determine that with environmental help, make sure the usable soils are there. And I believe that's been done.
Any other questions or comments from the commission about this report? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Steve Strickland, I'll recommend, I'll make a motion to approve rezon case P twenty-one dash zero one one two.
Motion to approve with conditions by Steve Strickland. Do it here second. Second from Scott Green. Any discussion? All those in favor of the required, the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous. Having no other items on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, so I got a motion from Nathan, a second from Scott. Done. Thank you, folks.